I'd like to call the meeting order. Please first, respect in open silence.
I need a motion for executive session.
I'd like to make a motion. The following resolution resolved at the board meeting, going to executive session approximately thirty minutes to the purpose of discussing this superintendent's surgery. Executive session minutes from now will not be released until such time as clearly appointed by the committee on health and safety.
Second. At six thirty-two, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We'll be back in half an hour.
Roll call, Ms. Francisco. Mrs. Fracano.
Here.
Mr. Seidowitz. Mr. Lippi.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Grino.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here. First tonight, we'll have the Director of Education's report, Mr. Novak.
Sorry to have... Am I on? Okay, thanks, Nate. All right, tonight, a little bit of a different Director of Education report. I have the honor and privilege of introducing three very special little girls who I've been talking with periodically over the last month or two. They are in the process of creating or finishing their Girl Scout Bronze Award, and they're going to be doing this with the collaboration of the Macabre School. I'd like to introduce, from Troop 97403, Caitlin Donaldson.
This is Lily Santiago.
Sunny Lynn Hart, along with their... Yeah, round of applause, they've been doing a great job. And they were worried if they were going to present in front of a crowd or not in July, so thank you for accommodating their request. I'd also want to introduce their group leaders and parent volunteers. That is Mrs. Rebecca Santiago, Mrs. Kelly Hart, and Mrs. Kelly Donaldson. Do you want to stand up for a round of applause?
Before you start, is your poster okay up here? Is it okay if I have this here? Okay, thank you.
All right, you're ready.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Donaldson, and I'm a student from Westbrook School.
Hi, my name is Lily Santiago, and I'm a student from Marshall Hill.
Hi, my name is Sunny Lynn Hart, and I am also from Marshall Hill School. We are from Girl Scout Troop 97403. And we will be starting our sixth grade year at Macabre Middle School in the fall.
We are here tonight to discuss our idea for our troop's Bronze Award, the GPC. The GPC is the Girls' Preparing Closet. It would be a space that would be offered to all students needing period products. We do not want equal, we want equitable rights. Everything we need should be available at school when we need it. There is soap, paper towels, toilet paper, so why do we not... Why do we also have... Why do not... Why do we not also have pads and tampons?
We have met with Principal Ryanhold and Mr. Novak, and came up with a plan to have a given closet located next to the nurse's office, which would allow for a semi-private process for students to get supplies they need during the school day, as well as an area for solitude if needed.
We feel there is a need for this because did you know that one of four girls experienced period poverty? On average, the cost in pads and tampons are $100 yearly. For some students, they will experience their first period at school, and having access to a free closet will be helpful. Boys don't need to pay for toilet paper, so why should girls have to pay for pads?
Have you heard of the bill A1349? If you haven't, it is a bill that has been passed on June 22nd, 2023, mandating that all NJ schools supply period products for students in student sixth through twelfth grade.
By incorporating the GPC, you will have already started the process. Please help us getting this project approved. Questions?
I just want to say, ladies, I was about to announce that in my portion of the meeting tonight, so you stole my thunder a little bit, but thank you, I'm glad you did a better job than I would have.
I'm really... I can tell that I'm not alone in saying that, we're really proud of you. This is awesome, thank you. My only question is, where can we drop off donations?
So, for donations, we would like to have a box out of Macabre School, and we would like to send home fundraiser stuff and stuff, or flyers, to donate all sorts of stuff that we would need for the closet.
So possibly maybe in the front... Right outside the front lobby will be like a box?
We... Yeah, we talked about the... We already have the black and gold boxes in front. They're going to have an area that partitioned just for them, and then we're going to periodically share information about the process for donations, so that when we have a back-to-school night, we have a parent event where people are coming to the school anyway, a good opportunity to replenish their supplies.
Wonderful, and I see on your poster it says what we can donate: tampons, pads, chapstick, deodorant, facial wipes, underwear, black leggings, and lotion. Anything else that you can think of? All right, and these things are going to be available in the bathrooms, the locker room, and the nurse's office. Tampons are always available at the nurse's office. Just so you know, if anyone's in an emergency, they are always there. But this is incredible, thank you so much.
Was there something else you guys wanted to say? You're good?
Go ahead, you still have the mic.
Okay.
Go ahead.
They didn't change that poster to what we had talked about with Mr. Novak.
Oh, that's okay.
So the location is going to be, if you didn't hear them, the next to the nurse's office, there'll be the room there, so they can set up the room with the closet, chairs, if they need a minute.
Wonderful, that is not a problem at all.
The board was provided with a map and a diagram of their plan and the types of things that they're going to work on this summer.
On the flyer, there's an Amazon wishlist, does that have all those items? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, guys, great job. I just want to comment on how impressed I have been in their... How serious they've taken this, the passion that they have behind it. Also want to say thank you to the girls, because I've been able to talk better at home with my daughter about such things, I usually run from the room screaming, and you've changed my perspective, so thank you.
Ms. Francisco, special reports?
Yes, we have the board meeting minutes from June 14th, June 20th, and the special meeting from June 26th.
I need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes: June 14th, 2023, special meeting; June 14th, 2023, executive session; June 20th, 2023, workshop regular meeting; June 20th, 2023, executive session; June 26th, 2023, special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstained from June 20th workshop and executive session, I wasn't there.
And I abstained from June 14th, special meeting and executive session.
Well?
And I abstained from June 14th, special meeting and executive session.
There.
And I abstained from June 26th, special meeting.
Okay, next is my president's report, which is really small this month. I did attend the STEM camp, and was very impressed by our students and their willingness to just get right in there and touch frogs and salamanders and really fun science things. That was never my strength, but it was really cool to watch, like, the kids just want to learn and want to be there and have fun. And I actually heard some kids go like, "Oh, the buses are coming", like, they didn't want to leave, and that's when learning is just so amazing, and what a great program. I also just wanted to...
Can I ask if you just hold that mic closer to your...
Oh, you can't hear me?
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
That is very unusual.
That's for sure.
Better? The next thing is, I just wanted to let everyone know that Board of Education trustee petitions to run for a Board of Education seat. The petitions are due to the county by July 31st for the November election. And I'm really excited, even though it is hot and it's July, I love seeing the community come out and support one another, so thank you for being here. The next portion of our meeting is public comments. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of thirty minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided, give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Our first signed-up speaker is Ms. Catherine Signorelli.
This is so low. Hold it?
You can adjust.
Not sure about that. Do I sign after? Okay. Okay. When I'm nervous, I talk really fast, and so, good luck. My name is Tina Signorelli, and I'm an English teacher at West Milford High School. I just finished my nineteenth year of teaching and my fifteenth year advising the GSA. I'm here to talk about the importance of GSAs in general, and particularly in our school district. First, I'd like to talk a bit about the founding of our club, its origins, its purpose, even its name. When I started at West Milford in '04, '05, there was already a RACE Club, its acronym standing for Ending Racism and Sexism Everywhere. The RACE Club is quite active, doing great work in our school, but I came to find out there seemed to be an unmet need for some of West Milford High School students. At the end of my first year of teaching, I wanted to reflect on my process, find ways to improve my classroom and determine what worked and what didn't. I've continued to do this every year since. That first year, one student was quick to point out that his favorite aspect of my class was, and I quote, "The fact that he could spend forty-five minutes without hearing, he goes on to state homophobic slurs", which brought a sense of calm to his nerves. Fast forward a few years, and I had the honor of that same student and a friend of his asking me if I'd consider founding a gay-straight alliance. This club would be like the RACE Club, but instead would focus on the pressing needs of our LGBTQ+ students. Since the formation of the club, the needs of our students have changed, and we have therefore changed our name to the Gender Sexuality Alliance. It was important to us to make sure that our transgender students felt welcomed into the club. However, regardless of name, this club has always been and will continue to be a place for the LGBTQ+ population and their allies. To quote the June 20th board meeting, "One of the problematic aspects of GSA, according to some, is that an unlicensed professional is discussing sexuality with minors." I guess that unlicensed professional would be me. However, that statement could not be farther from the truth. I can only assume that, as is typical of people speaking on this hot-button issue today, the term sexuality and sex have been conflated, confused. When students identify or try to begin the process of discovering their own identities, they might be ascribing labels to themselves. These labels are fluid, these labels are self-asccribed, these labels are theirs, that is their sexuality as they try to define it. The specifics of their behaviors regarding those labels are never discussed. Sex is never discussed. The comments from that meeting, though brief, made very broad and inaccurate statements about the content and purpose of our meetings and club. Our mission is simply to provide a safe space for students. We spend meetings learning about local, national, and global LGBTQ+ issues. We champion the students' successes, and we comfort them during their struggles. We discuss how to handle an unsupportive family member at Thanksgiving, what colleges might make them feel safest, and even for our straight students who attend, how to be a better ally, something honestly we could all learn a thing or two about. We plan and run various events ranging from national days like the Day of Silence to something as simple as a rainbow bake sale, literally sweetening the day of staff and students who partake. We've made bulletin boards for important LGBTQ+ dates and milestones, and we've remade them when they've been torn down. Our town, like many, needs GSA. This is not just my opinion, research backs this. GSAs create safer schools for LGBT students and their allies, this is just a fact. Students in schools with GSAs are less likely to hear homophobic remarks in school and are less likely to feel unsafe than students in schools that one. LGBT students are less likely to miss out... Miss school when there's a GSA. LGBT students in schools with GSAs are significantly more likely to be aware of a supportive adult at school, which is reported to impact higher grade point averages and post-secondary education as compared to LGBT students who do not. Our Board of Education has a duty to support and protect all students, and this marginalized community is markedly safer and stronger due to the mere presence of the Gender Sexuality Alliance, whether or not they even attend. If research isn't enough, I'll use anecdotes and the students' own words. Like all of my esteemed colleagues over the years, I've received many thank-you notes from former students. I'll quote some of my favorites. And though typically my favorites talk about how I made them love reading, these are pretty cool too. One student said, "In this town, having a friendly ally around school is super important, and you've helped more gay kids than you realize." Another stated, "Coming out in high school is one of the most terrifying things I've ever done. Feeling the support from a teacher was life-saving. I remember not feeling judged or threatened by the fact that you knew I was gay." Another, "You may never know all the ways you've saved lives." Another, "I'm in awe with the impact you've had on this town's LGBTQ+ community, it is so hard to put into words. Your hard work trying to make everyone's voices heard does not ever go unnoticed. You bring safety and happiness to an amazing community, I'm so lucky to have been a part of it." And finally, "Thank you for being a kind person, an ally, and a positive supportive presence. I'm grateful for how much you helped me when I was struggling the most. Thankfully, I'm in a much better place now, but I wouldn't be here without you." I'll end with an anecdote or two that have stuck with me over the years. The captain of the football team outside my classroom overheard explaining to his teammates the Day of Silence was not about gay pride, but instead about protecting those who've been bullied and harassed, sometimes to death. The GSA member who got up in front of the staff and explained the importance of honoring students' pronouns. The student who came to me in tears during my lunch because their parents threatened to throw them out if they tried to identify as gay. The student who ran to my classroom with a friend of hers, neither of them GSA members, because a teacher was using his dead name and he didn't know what to do about it, but my student, his friend, knew who to ask for help. None of these quotes or anecdotes are about me or who I am as a person. This is the role of a GSA advisor. Any of my colleagues would serve in this role in the exact same way. We are teachers, we are here for the students. Their health and well-being is always the most important thing to us. But the existence of this club, the sheer fact that students know there's someone, anyone, not just me, naming themselves the person who will always hold that safe space for them every other Monday in Room 133, 215 to 315, I have one more sentence. And whenever they need me in between...
I need a second. Go ahead.
I'm going to start that sentence again, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you can finish, and you can slow down, they extended you.
Thank you. I was really ramping it up there at the end. Okay, I'm going to dial back just a second, I'm sorry. "The existence of this club, the sheer fact that students know there is someone, anyone, not just me, naming themselves the person who will always hold that safe space for them every other Monday in Room 133, from 215 to 315, and whenever they need me in between, that support is more vital than some of you will ever understand. Consider yourself lucky that you don't need it." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy... Ms. Becker.
I'm going to read... I'm sorry, I'm Wendy Becker, I live at 22 Hillview Court. Okay. I'm Wendy Becker, I live at 22 Hillview Court, West Milford, and I'm going to be reading an email that I addressed to the Board of Education members about a week ago. Dear West Milford Board of Education members, I'm writing to you regarding some concerning remarks made by a Board of Education member in regards to the high school GSA club. I'm a resident and a parent of two current high school students and one recently graduated student of this district. My own children have found and continue to find the GSA club to be an inclusive club and a safe supportive haven for LGBTQ+ students and their allies. Mr. Seidowitz publicly and erroneously tried to link a situation that happened several years ago in which a former PE teacher and athletic coach was found to be having an inappropriate relationship with a student and player. This case does not have any relevance to the GSA club, the current club advisors, or students. Implying that any past or present grooming of students is somehow related to the GSA club is a false and slanderous claim. Remarks such as those made by Mr. Seidowitz incite fear in an already vulnerable group of students who meet together in order to find a safe and supportive space in which they can be themselves. This group has not changed their mission statement, nor does the group engage in any political activities, unless you consider it political to advocate for a school environment that is free of discrimination and bullying. I'm also writing to you as a concerned faculty member of this district. As a faculty member, I find it extremely sad and upsetting that our LGBTQ+ students and their allies should find the need to advocate to our Board of Education members for the continuation of their club. I've always been so proud of our district's commitment to providing caring and respectful and inclusive school environment, all of which are reflected and intentionally taught to our students through our core values. I'm equally proud to work in a district that has earned the distinction of being named a District of Character. I've been part of this rigorous process and for multiple schools within our district. A key component or principle of being a District of Character is creating a caring community, creating attachments and relationships that foster a sense of belonging and connection. My colleagues and I see firsthand that when our students feel cared for, feel a sense of belonging, and most importantly, they feel safe, they're able to learn and grow as individuals. I can attest to the fact that our faculty and staff work extremely hard to create this type of environment in all of our schools in order to meet the needs of all of our learners. This is especially important for our LGBTQ+ students that are more at risk for isolation, bullying, discrimination, depression, and suicide. I would like to remind you of the Code of Ethics for School Board Trustees, which states that you will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. It is expected that you will frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. I'm wondering if those trustees that have a problem with the GSA club have consulted with the club advisors, district mental health professionals, or spoken with any of the students that participate and find support in the club. If not, I urge you to do so, your Code of Ethics requires this of you. I'm also writing to you as a licensed clinical social worker, a school social worker, and a mental health professional that's employed by this district. In this role, I find it necessary to share with you that there are countless empirically validated research findings that support the continuation of GSA clubs with similar missions to support our students. To summarize this research for you, recent studies indicate that having the support of at least one accepting adult dramatically reduces suicide attempts among individuals that identify as LGBTQ+. Finally, I wish to remind you that in your role as trustees, you are responsible for helping to create and support approved district goals. For the past several years, at least one of our district goals has focused on the mental health and wellness of our students. During the 2223 school year, the goal was as follows: Build and foster a culture of mental and physical wellness for students and staff in order to craft a more supportive educational environment. The words and applied agenda of Mr. Seidowitz seem to be in contradiction to this goal. In closing, I wish to state that should a trustee's personal beliefs interfere with being able to make decisions that are in the best interest of all of our students, I urge you to resign your position. If a trustee chooses to act on personal opinions or beliefs that would undermine our district goals... Can I just finish my last sentence?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
All right. If a trustee chooses to act on personal opinions or beliefs that would undermine our district goals or the daily efforts of our faculty and staff that they spend creating this caring environment, a sense of safety and a sense of belonging, again, I urge you to resign your position. There is no room for that hate and small-minded ignorance in West Milford. Sincerely, Wendy Becker, resident, affirming parent, and district social worker.
The next speaker is Mrs. Batzolos. I will say this, if there are many, many speakers in the audience, we are not going to get through all of you if we clap and stand after each one, because every minute counts. So we're on a thirty-minute time right now, and it seems like the board is extremely willing to extend not only the individual speakers, but probably, I would assume, as they've done in the past, again. But if we can maybe hold all that to the end... I mean, I know we love all of you, and it's just... We can clap, but we'll go a little quicker, okay? I will speak quickly. Thank you. Hi, Mrs. Batzolos, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Batzolos. I'm a history teacher at West Milford High School, and I am reading a statement written by a former LGBTQ+ West Milford High School student and member of the GSA. We live in a world where LGBTQ adolescents constantly feel alienated and ostracized. We are subjected to an onslaught of discrimination in our workplace, our communities, and even in our own homes. Providing a safe space to support such a marginalized and vulnerable group at school is essential. The GSA club does just that. Furthermore, it connects LGBTQ students and allies, letting them know they aren't alone and that there are people at school who they can relate to and confide in. You cannot feign concern for your students' well-being while suggesting we eliminate the one space where they feel wholly accepted by their peers. We see right through your nonsensical dredging. To conclude that GSA, the environment, is the problem rather than the offender himself is profoundly fallacious. You have made it clear that your intention is not to protect the LGBTQ students, but to diminish their prominence in this school. The message you send, if you are to eradicate this club, is that LGBTQ students are unwelcome at West Milford High School. You will make them feel isolated, you will make them feel unwanted, you will make them feel alone. If you truly care about the welfare of your students, you will vote in support of the GSA's continued operation.
Thank you. Our next speaker, my name, my glasses, George York, Mr. York.
Good evening, my name is George York, I live at 24 Shadbury Lane in Pine Cliff Lake. My comments tonight are based on fifty-plus years in education. I am old enough so that I may not be able to look fifty years in the future, but I certainly have enough experience to look fifty years in retrospect. I have watched our nation create a society... I have watched our nation create a society that I believe is truly global, inclusive, and diverse for all and truly works for all people being equally afforded all the rights and privileges that our forefathers put forth, and for that, I'm truly proud. However, over the past few years, I have become disillusioned by the many institutions to which I claimed an affiliation and claimed me, and I have watched our government, our churches, and some of our educational institutions who purport to support us fail and not live up to my expectations. Schools are just one of the multiplicity of institutions that educate our youth in addition to the family, the church, and other institutions among many. However, they are the only institutions that are mandated to educate you from the very young to about 16 or 18. But we have to ask ourselves, what is the purpose of schools? I would argue that the main purpose is to prepare our youth to think critically, constructively, and creatively, and to prepare them to participate fully and globally in our world. We have certainly come a long way in serving the educative needs of all of our students, but there's still a lot of work to be done, and that needs to be done to help all students achieve their full potential. Banning books that deal with issues of race, gender, sexuality, and identity, among other issues, does not mean that these issues don't exist and that our students will not get that information somewhere, but just where can we trust it? Limiting and denying the rights of some people, women, LGBTQIA+ youth, minorities, and the disenfranchised, does not mean they, we, don't exist. But schools could also be some of the safest places for kids. Some stats: In 2022, the Trevor Project surveyed over 34,000 LGBTQ plus youth across the country. Half of them, between the ages of 13 and 17, reported that they had seriously considered suicide. Trans youth had the highest rates of considered and attempted suicide, and queer youth of color have reported higher rates compared to their white peers. Nearly three-quarters of LGBTQ youth reported anxiety, while 58% said they were depressed. Yes, the data are alarming, and it's a call to action. However, there is hope. The data also show that rates of considered and attempted suicide are drastically reduced in schools where there were affirming spaces where students knew they could be themselves and would be loved and supported. Researcher and lecturer Brené Brown wrote that what we can do and what we are ethically called to do is create a space in our schools and classrooms where all students can walk in and for that day or hour take off the crushing weight of their armor, hand it on a rack, and open their hearts and be truly seen. It is our duty to our youth in our schools and our communities to ensure that our LGBTQ youth are celebrated, affirmed, supported, and fully educated. For many of the groups I've mentioned, there are no safe places in society. We can no longer depend on all of our institutions to protect us, but I am asking West Milford to rise above the rest and create, if not a safe place, since some places are not safe, a safer place. My hope is that we recognize that it is our duty to push past our discomfort, learn more, engage more, and possibly change some of our views for the sake of our children. Their lives depend on it. It could save a life. They are the future of West Milford and the future of our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. York. Melissa Pritchett.
Can I start talking while he's ready? Good evening. My name is Melissa Pritchett. I live at 16 Postbrook Road North in West Milford. I am the parent of two current West Milford High School students and two West Milford High School alumni. My speech has been sent to you via email with access to links to the documents and websites that I'll be referencing tonight. I will also be abbreviating and paraphrasing my speech as some points were so eloquently covered by those who spoke before me. I'm here tonight to give you a little education. As a teacher, a mom, and an ally of our LGBTQ plus students, many of whom are the dearest friends of my children, I feel the need to speak out after hearing the very uneducated remarks that were made by a board trustee at the last meeting. I would first like to speak to you about the ACLU, the American Civil Liberties Union. For nearly 100 years, the ACLU has been our nation's guardian of liberty, working in courts, legislatures, and communities to defend and preserve the individual rights and liberties that the Constitution and the laws of the United States guarantee everyone in this country. The ACLU states, "While school administrators sometimes balk allowing students to have GSA's, federal law guarantees that students at public high schools have the right to do so." Under the law, there are two types of clubs in public high schools: curricular clubs, those that relate directly to things that are taught in the school, like a math club, and non-curricular clubs, those that don't relate directly to things that are taught in the school, such as a chess club. The Equal Access Act is a United States federal law passed as Title VIII of the Education for Economic Security Act in 1984 to compel federally funded public secondary schools to provide equal access to extracurricular student clubs. The Equal Access Act says that if a public high school allows students to form any non-curricular clubs at all, then it must allow students to form and continue any non-curricular clubs they want, and it also has to treat all non-curricular clubs equally. I would now like to refer to the 2020 New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Comprehensive Health and Physical Education from the New Jersey Department of Education. The New Jersey Student Learning Standards, Comprehensive Health and Physical Education Revise Standards, incorporate rigorous evidence-based processes resulting in a focus on concepts that are central for lifelong student wellness. These standards reflect the current thinking and best practices found in health and physical education documents published by national content-specific organizations as well as public health and other education organizations and agencies. On page 6 of that document, you will find the standards for social and sexual health. These standards encompass respect and accept differences of an individual's race, religion, gender identity, gender expression, ethnicity, disability, socioeconomic background, and perspectives of health-related decisions. The extent to which people connect with others in different environments, adapt to various social and sexual situations, feel supported by individuals and institutions, and experience a sense of belonging all contribute to social and sexual health. These are the standards put forth by the state that have been adopted by our school district and are part of our current curriculum. The standard states that by the end of grade eight, inclusive schools and communities are accepting of all people and make them feel welcome and included. All of these lessons at every grade level convey the same valuable message: Be a nice human. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight, and I wish to leave you with this quote by Emma Zou: "In a world where so many are throwing bricks on others, be the one who builds with them." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchett. Next speaker is Ms. Chandler, Sarah Chandler.
My name is Sarah Chandler. I live at 39 Orleans Lane in West Milford. Okay. My name is Sarah Chandler. I live at 39 Orleans Lane in West Milford, and I graduated West Milford High School in 2021. My freshman year, I watched videos of a boy tearing down the "Transgender Day of Visibility" bulletin board. It stated why trans people need more visibility and listed some facts about increased suicide rates and things of the like. My sophomore year, I watched this act of hate occur once again. This time, it was accompanied by hateful vulgar social media posts made by my classmates, people I had grown up with. How did I find myself in such a hate-filled environment? I sat at my lunch table facing the half-torn sign and started researching New Jersey's inter-district public school choice program, where I would be allowed to attend another public school at no cost to my parents. I was dead set on going to Pompton Lakes Public High School, a participant in this program. I researched requirements and forms and texted my mom, letting her know of my decision. She asked if I really wanted to leave my little sister in the district alone. No, I guess I didn't. My junior year, I found GSA. I walked into Ms. Signerelli's classroom on the first day of school and was greeted with an environment that I hadn't exactly experienced before. Signs were posted designating the space as hate-free. One sticker depicted the equality sign; another read, "I'm a safe person to come out to." I glanced over to my friend Alex with a look like, whoa. He introduced her to me as the GSA advisor. GSA was highly stigmatized, it still is. But all right, I thought I could get behind this. I soon found myself never missing a Monday at school. I vividly remember coming home from my first GSA meeting I attended. I was smiling. I hadn't often found myself smiling for presumably no reason like that, but I felt hope. GSA gave me hope for an environment where everyone feels safe, for a more understanding and educated community, for a class of students who don't have to watch their bulletin board get torn down. I soon found myself in a leadership position in GSA, where I was helping to run some of the meetings and set agendas. I would like to give a brief synopsis of what GSA meetings look like, seeing as there seems to be confusion about its content. Over the pandemic, we began to start meetings with our rose and thorn over the past week or two, our best and worst days, what we're happy about and what was bothering us. It was up to each student to discuss what they'd like, if at all. It could range from, I earned an A on my test, to, I'm anxious about seeing my family for the first time since I came out. As a group, we would brainstorm and research different ways to help finding that student resources that could aid them better. We would then do a check-in discussing upcoming dates or events. If there was an approaching event, we would then work on what we needed for that, such as posters, or social media posts, or data gathering. If we weren't working on anything, then we would read news stories and discuss the happenings in popular culture. We discussed the good and the bad, talking about how that particular news story, bill, or event, could impact us and what we could do about it. We watched Taylor Swift's music video for "You Need to Calm Down", probably my favorite meeting. We listened to the Oscars speeches when LGBTQ plus actors were recognized for their achievements, but sex was never discussed. GSA's are necessary. GSA's do so much good that goes unseen. GSA's save lives. This GSA has saved lives. Voting against GSA is voting against equality, voting against safe spaces, and voting against all students. Thank you, guys.
Deena Griswiti.
Hi, my name is Deena Griswiti. I live at 28 Starlight Road. I have one alumni and one daughter going into her sophomore year in the high school. Dear Board Members and Administrators, This past May, I found myself emailing and speaking at the monthly board meeting to support and protect our much-celebrated West Milford Arts Program. I was shocked at the time that such a valued program would be at risk of being gutted. Little did I know that I would find myself writing the board again, this time with a much more grave concern. It has come to the community's attention that one of our board members has expressed shameful and ultimately dangerous views on our GSA club and in turn, our LGBTQ plus student community. I must start with how remarkable it is to me that we even need to be having this discussion. It is enraging. His remarks were disturbing, and in my opinion, this board member should be immediately removed from the board or at the very least, an ethics violation should be filed with the state because his views... Because his views, which bear repeating, are dangerous to our children. The following quote is from the Trevor Project: "A growing body of research suggests that gay-straight alliances are similar or similar efforts that explicitly acknowledge and include LGBTQ plus students can play important roles in promoting emotionally and physically..." Sorry, I can't see. "...safe schools. In particular, GSA's and similar student clubs for LGBTQ plus students are an important strategy for positively connecting students with supportive adults and peers. GSA's can help schools address the harassment of LGBTQ plus students, encourage dialogue about diversity and acceptance, and promote respect for all people. GSA's can also enhance students' self-esteem and foster their resilient and coping skills for responding to bias. These factors have a direct correlation with rates of mental health concerns among our youth population. Forty-five percent of LGBTQ youth seriously consider attempting suicide in the past year. To all responsible, educated, and informed adults, these statistics should be terrifying. And in my opinion, every conceivable action to address this sobering statistic should be explored and considered in our school environment. But at the absolute very least, the adults at your table should be educated and empathetic enough to understand that our GSA club is a lifeline for our students. On countless occasions, my children have come home to tell me that they have heard in the hallways and in classes derogatory hateful remarks made about LGBTQ students. This is also a vital reason for school communities to offer a GSA club, to promote a more educated, empathetic, tolerant, and inclusive environment for our student body. I'm not sure if we can change the minds of parents who may be promoting hate in their homes, but we can educate the hearts and minds of the students in our school district, making tolerance, inclusion, kindness, and empathy a guiding force in and outside of our classroom environment. On the other side of the coin, I am overjoyed by the support I do see for our LGBTQ community among our students. I've gotten to see this firsthand with both of my daughters' groups of friends. The future, I believe, is in good hands with them. However, it must be noted, the fact that my 15- and 19-year-olds and their friends have a better grasp of understanding of the topic at hand and what it is to be a kind and compassionate human being than some on our board is disgusting and unacceptable. You are supposed to be an intelligent role model for our children. Educate yourself and do your job.
All right, the board needs to know that that's 30 minutes, so we can close it and move on, or you can... There are... I was just gonna say, there are also two speakers still signed up, so you'd like to extend for those two and then further for another half hour? Is that what you're asking? Sorry, just be specific if you can make a motion for a half hour. Thank you. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nicolette Carpenter.
Hi, my name is Nicolette Carpenter. I live at 119 Upper High Crest Drive in West Milford. Hello, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight at this board meeting. My name is Nicolette Carpenter, and I am an alumnus of West Milford High School, graduating in 2021. Since my time at West Milford High School, I have transferred to Passaic County Community College, recently graduated, and am now set to transfer to Harvard this coming fall. An educational journey where my foundation begins in West Milford School Districts, a school district with a commitment to providing an inclusive, respectful, and empathetic environment. As a passionate ally and advocate of the LGBTQ plus community throughout my time at West Milford High School, I have found the GSA club to be a catalyst and conducive for a safe learning environment, as well as a supportive haven for LGBTQ plus students and their allies. Within this space, my fellow students and I find solitude, safely expressing experiences and identities in the comfort of a support system. As a district committed to fostering a sense of belonging and a board of trustees with a duty to protect the mental health and wellness of all students, I urge you to consider the importance of a GSA club. By having access to at least one accepting adult, LGBTQ plus students were significantly less likely to report a suicide attempt in the last year. GSA clubs save lives. Alongside creating a sanctuary for students, the West Milford GSA club has cultivated a safe space to learn from others, serving as an educational platform and promoting understanding and respect for not only diversity, but the individual and unique experiences that my fellow students have undergone. GSA's impact extends beyond LGBTQ plus students. Those who have had the opportunity to participate in a GSA club are more likely to become advocates for LGBTQ rights and equality in society. They carry with them the lessons of empathy and acceptance, becoming agents of positive change in society. I'm positive the members of West Milford want nothing more than for West Milford students to become agents of social change within our larger society. A GSA club is not just a mere extracurricular activity. It induces positive change. The West Milford GSA club fosters inclusivity, educates the entire student body, attendees or not, and provides support for LGBTQ plus individuals while promoting understanding and empathy among all members of our community. It is our collective responsibility to ensure that every West Milford student feels safe, celebrated, and heard. With these principles in mind, I urge you to understand the importance of a GSA club in the West Milford School District and the duty by which you hold to create a safe space for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney Stevenson.
I don't think they've heard that.
Uh, Mrs. Stevenson. Nicolette. Courtney, can you hand Nicolette the board to sign in? Or whoever has it? Thank you.
Well, my name is Courtney Stevenson, 307 Ridge Road, West Milford, New Jersey. I am not here to speak about the GSA club tonight, although I am impressed with the eloquence, especially of... eloquence, especially of our alumni, and how they have spoken to you. I know, being on this board in the past, that the GSA will get passed tonight because you are all wonderful trustees. I am here to speak tonight about Number Two Under Education: Curriculum Associates. This is a company that provides the iReady platform that I have spoken about when I was a board trustee. I'm very excited to see this on tonight's agenda. iReady is an educational tool that will be such an asset to the educators of our district, as well as support for parents who want to help their children academically. iReady is a very easy-to-use tool that will provide specific data in the areas of math and reading. Teachers will give their students a diagnostic assessment at the beginning of the year. The program then sets the child's learning path according to his or her level. The program will get harder if the child performs well in his or her lessons, and it will get easier if the child is struggling. In addition, teachers have the ability to adjust lessons to make them harder or easier. Teachers can assign specific lessons to students depending on what they are teaching. iReady will provide teachers with groupings of students so they can easily teach small groups in order to differentiate instruction. iReady also gives students... Gives teachers... Oh, sorry. iReady gives students benchmark assessments so educators can assess students' levels multiple times throughout the school year. Educators can have great discussions and collaborations on how best to help students based on assessments that iReady provides. Teachers can have open discussions with parents about their child's progress, as parent reports are easily generated from iReady. This can be a huge help to teachers who may have difficult conversations about a child's progress academically, since the data is very clear for everyone to understand. On the other hand, if a parent is feeling like their child is struggling in a certain skill, they can ask the teacher how to help their child. iReady will allow them to have specific lessons assigned to that skill. Parents can support their child at home using iReady. Of course, iReady should not be used as the only tool to assess or support students, but it is an invaluable resource that I hope you will pass tonight. Again, Number Two Under Education. In my district, as a teacher, administrators encourage teachers to use iReady in the classroom. We have seen the NJSLA scores improve due to the amount of time iReady is used in the classroom. Since West Milford is a district that is in desperate need of tools to help our students perform better on standardized tests, I am hopeful that everyone will vote yes to approve Number Two Under Education tonight.
Is there someone else that would like to speak that hasn't signed up? Coming up. Mr. Bottsols.
There it goes. Better? Okay, good. Chris Bottsols, I'm an English teacher here at West Milford High School, and I'm reading a statement that was written by a former student of West Milford. Hello, everyone. I'm sorry I could not be here in person. My name is Christopher Servin-Casino, and I graduated from West Milford High School in 2013, 10 years ago, under a different name. If you were around then, you might remember me. I was very active in the school as vice president of the Student Council, chief of staff of the Model United Nations, cast member in the school play, and I took almost entirely AP classes. I was also one of the only openly vocally queer students I knew during my four years there. When I attended, Macapin and the high school were not kind to LGBTQ students. I had classmates switch schools due to homophobic bullying. I had a crush maliciously outed. Other students protested the day of silence. Teachers would make homophobic and transphobic jokes in class or laugh along when students made them. I had more than one friend stay in the closet because of bullying. Yet, I didn't join the GSA. I had too much going on, and frankly, I didn't want to face the bullying I knew the members of the GSA faced, but its existence was important to me. I knew that if it got too bad, there was a room where I would be welcomed by other queer kids and allies, and there was an adult who was not only safe to talk to, but who would actively support and help me. That adult was Tina Signarelli, the advisor of the GSA. The fact that there was a community in the GSA often kept me going, even if I was too shy, or proud, or scared to take advantage of it. And I know so many queer kids felt the same way about Ms. Signarelli and the GSA back then. We weren't alone, even if we weren't ready to jump in. Now, 10 years later, I've since come out as trans and established a life for myself, a stable one filled with joy. I have a trans husband, a dog, a job I like, and a one-bedroom in Brooklyn with a backyard, fruit, and vegetable garden. I know, brag much? But my husband and I owe everything to the different queer communities we have been a part of. When my husband got sick and couldn't work as much, gay and trans people paid his rent. When I needed major surgery, queer people provided food and care. I have a great job in advertising, which I got because a trans person from the internet preferred me. I have paid strangers rent, brought them groceries, contributed to their medical funds, and school supplies for their children, helped with their resumes, because queer people take care of one another, even if we don't know one another. I know a lot of parents are scared that if they let their children explore their identities, their lives will be harder, but life is always hard. It's unavoidable, and you cannot decide whether they are LGBTQ or not. You can only look for ways to help them adapt to the chaos and joys and stressors of life, even when you aren't with them. They can't do that without strong communities of people who understand their experiences and can help them access the support they need. Teaching them to develop that community is fundamentally what the GSA does. When kids can grow up forming bonds with other LGBTQ people, they will be safer than you can imagine as adults. They will learn how to ask for help. They will never be alone. They will find housing, jobs, and the loves of their lives. They'll practice thinking deeply about who they are and what they want. They will stand up for themselves and others. I wish I had joined the GSA in high school, because if I had learned how to be a part of the queer community back then, maybe my late teens and early twenties wouldn't have been so hard. Once I did, my life was changed, so keep the GSA around. It helps everyone in the school, whether they're out as queer or not, in the club or not. It's not just a safe space. It teaches a skill that has saved me many times over. To paraphrase poet John Donne, "Nobody is an island. We are each part of a vast, varied continent," and all children deserve to know that connection. I wish I could be here in person, so I thank whoever is reading this. Again, my name is Christopher Servin-Casino. I am a transgender alum of West Milford High School, class of 2013, and I support the GSA so that the next generation can find the security, comfort, and community that makes for a happy life. Thanks.
Thank you. I have this one, and then you. I don't know your names, so...
Can everybody hear me? My name is Andrea Chapilo. I am an alum of West Milford High School from 2009. I know the inaugural member of the GSA, Malcolm DeCesar, so I'm here representing him.
Say, say. Hold the mic for her. Thank you. Yep. Nope, you're good.
I can hold it.
Okay.
I'll hold it. I want to thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to speak today, but I am really heartbroken and sad to be here to speak upon this. I was informed that the GSA is up for closure. I speak as an ally of the LGBTQ community, and I stand as a testament of what happens when we... What happens when we embrace these... When we embrace LGBTQ culture in our school. As a West Milford High School alum, I have complicated feelings about being back here, I'll be honest. It was not easy going to school back in West Milford, back in those times. I had a fair share of bullying trauma, and if it wasn't for my gay friends, I would not have survived my last two years of school. And I am here in support of them, and I remember the first meetings of GSA in a race. I remember when GSA was Gay-Straight Alliance, and I am just so, so heartbroken that it has come to this place. This journey of my having... Sorry, this journey of my friendships have taken me across the world, and I still support the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, intersex, asexual communities. I'm also really disheartened about the comments that were made in regards to the Gay-Straight Alliance and the purpose of the club. It's dangerous. These comments have been used to weaponize gay communities for far too long, and it makes marginalized communities feel even more marginalized. I want to reflect upon an anecdote back in 2008, when we had, I believe it was the first day of silence in marking the death of Matthew Shepard. 10 years to the day he died, we had a silent protest where we had just vowed to take a day of silence. That was it. Plain, pure, simple. We were met with taunting. We were met with bullying. We were met with unsupportive faculty, and we were even met with students that decided to create gay... Straight Pride t-shirts and stickers. And as angry as I was then, I have to remind myself that we were teenagers, and we were working through some really complicated emotions. And, you know, as, dare I say, as an idealist, maybe that would have been a great opportunity for us to have more conversations around the LGBTQ community. But as angry as and incensed as I was, I could not imagine the shame, hurt, and just humiliation that my friends have felt. And I want to sit... I want to stand here in honor of them. I also want to have a moment for a classmate of ours that recently passed away from AIDS-related illness. This is not someone who was born in the 80s or the 90s. This person passed away just a couple of years ago, and he was an alum of West Milford High School. And for him, I want to really advocate for this safe space to remain open. If it wasn't, again, if it was not for the community that we cultivated in our time at West Milford, I don't know where I would be. So again, I stand here as an ally, and that I support the continuation of GSA, and that I'm really proud to see everybody here supporting their rainbow flags, and I just cannot thank you guys enough for showing your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Serena Kuns. I am a class of '23 graduate, and I live at 15 Roblin Road. What would people think if they found out I was gay? I could never admit that to anyone. I'd rather die. These are the thoughts that I walk the Macapin Middle School hallways with every day. I come from a supportive family, yet I was horrified at the idea that I would be seen as different from everybody. How devastating, to be branded with something that sets you apart, confines you, disconnects you. Every day, I walked around with shame and guilt of my existence, hoping that anytime someone looked me in the eye, they wouldn't find out my secret. How disastrous it would be. My freshman year was the first year of COVID. The time away from social expectations left me with the tremendous room to reflect. I love my sisters more than the air that I breathe, and I know they feel the same. We spent every day of our lives side by side, yet I was horrified at rejection from them. I talked myself out of coming out to them more times than I can count, but I did it, and they still love me. I am not a degenerate. I am not corrupt or impure. I am a human with love, and life, and happiness. I planned on hiding the secret, but that changed when we came back to school after COVID. There was no villain in my home, no prejudice from loved ones that prevented me from being authentic, none except my own fear. But that villain is in the air, in the news, the whispers, the slurs. It was not until my junior year, at the age of 17, that I began to understand who I am and be okay with who I love. It is hard to come to terms with living so many years being ashamed and unhappy. I would never wish 17 years of that grief on anyone. This tragedy of being afraid, thinking that your mere existence is a disgrace, is not something any which to ever go through alone. I am just a person with a heart and a mind like everyone else. I joined GSA in my junior year. No one indoctrinated me into joining. I was not groomed, or conditioned, or brainwashed. Before that... Before that, I was alone in my journey. We talked significantly about bullying and harassment prevention, that every student has a place to turn to, but how deeply does this run? Until my junior year, I had never heard a slur directed towards me, always in the background, always about someone else, but still happening. It wasn't until I started walking to class with another girl, standing at our lockers together, hiding our interlocked hands. People sometimes stared at us, as if we were freaks, but I didn't care. I knew there were others who experienced this, and in GSA, we come together and grow from these interactions. Every member has a story like mine, and many are not as fortunate to experience the acceptance that I have. In my last year at West Milford, my second year in GSA, I learned to live authentically and with dignity. I do not believe I could have done this without GSA. Would you be so callous to rob our younger students of this growth? One of the first few questions my mother had asked me about my relationship was, "Do you feel safe in public?" Like, "Do you hold hands?" It took me a moment to think. Actually, no, I don't. I had realized it happens everywhere, at the grocery store, at school sporting events, out to dinner. I stifle my love, smother my affection until it is quiet, in exchange for safety and security. What agony! How sorrowful is it to experience the most unparalleled and unmatched human emotion, love? To be forced to bury it and suffocate it in your own throat, at your own fingertips, on your own lips? The idea that GSA could ever be associated with grooming is incomprehensible and baffling. I graduated West Milford just a month ago, glad to have been a part of GSA, only to find out that there is a threat of it being removed. There is a moral panic sweeping across educational facilities. However, I ask you to reflect on where that panic is coming from. There is no perversion in providing teens with a safe space to talk about who they are. Being gay is not a degenerate set of sexual acts. It is a human trait of identity. In my four years of high school, we had required health classes once a year. We discussed well-being, mental awareness, safe sex, pregnancy, and biology. Would you consider the education of safe heterosexual sex to be grooming, or the biological process of pregnancy in a woman? These topics are standard within our high school. GSA is held as an optional after-school club. It is our safe space, which will not be violated. Irrational terror cannot be substituted for a skewed moral compass, for being moral is treating others with dignity and kindness, without unnecessary harm, no matter of their lifestyle. There is a tendency of hysteria within our history that has not disappeared from the psyche of the American mind, and we are yet again faced with a crisis. We cannot allow this phantom of perversion to force us backwards in progress. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Pelar, 80 Paradise Road, Oak Ridge, New Jersey, and I will be speaking for someone who could not make it today, so this is their words. Good evening. My name is Katie Schriller, and I'm an alumnus of the West Milford Township Public School District. I attended Paradise Snow Elementary School, Macapin Middle School, and I'm a graduate of the West Milford Township High School, class of 2013. I went on to pursue my undergraduate education at NYU's Tisch School of Arts and graduate at the Forham University Graduate School of Social Services, where I earned a Master's of Social Work. Today, I have a dual career as an independent filmmaker, producing film and television content across scripted and documentary programming, as a clinical social worker conducting weekly psychotherapy with adults and adolescents. During my first time at West Milford High School, I served as the student body president and as the student representative on the Board of Education, where I was in the privileged position of hearing the discourse surrounding the policies that informed my school district. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention that I was often disappointed and disheartened by the viewpoints of people responsible for my education. These feelings of disappointment are what have brought me here today. It has come to my attention that a Board of Education matter member may disparaging marks about the high school's Gender Sexuality Alliance, or GSA, expressing his intent to vote against approval for the club. I stand here today to advocate for the club's existence and for the students who... For which the club is a lifeline. Various studies showcase that LGBTQ+ youth are at a particularly high level of risk for bullying, harassment, and discrimination at school, both by their peers and school faculty. Hostile school environments have negative consequences for both LGBTQ+ and non-LGBTQ+ student populations. Prejudice and discrimination not only make a difference for individual students, but those belief systems and behaviors shape the culture of schools and threaten the effectiveness of education institutions overall. In recent national school climate surveys from the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network and Human Rights Campaign Foundation, respectfully, it was reported that LGBTQ+ students who have experienced bullying, harassment, or discrimination due to their sexual orientation or gender identity also reported missing more days of school, receiving lower grades, and having lower educational aspirations than their heterosexual and cisgender peers. These results do not only impact the LGBTQ students, but also reflect poorly on the individual schools, school districts, and entire communities. I can say as a filmmaker who has made numerous award-winning films about and featuring the LGBTQ+ community, as a social worker who works with many LGBTQ+ adults and adolescents daily, and as a lesbian woman myself, clubs like GSA are essential to young people learning about and accepting themselves and others. To suggest that clubs like GSA are essential to young people learning about and accepting To suggest that clubs like GSA have no place in our schools today is to deny a specific population of students the space to feel affirmed and validated as discover who they are, and that denial, that's discrimination, black and white. And let's remember what we're really talking about here. A GSA is a school-based group of students and faculty advisors that provide LGBTQ plus students and their allies as social and activist space within the school ecosystem. GSA's offer students an opportunity to build community, learn about the LGBTQ plus experience, develop leadership skills, and order, organize within their school. And if we go back to the national school climate survey, surveys of LGBTQ high school students surveyed, those with GSA's reported less bullying based on sexual orientation or gender identity, less homophobic language, and a greater sense of belonging in their school environment. Additionally, the data showed LGBTQ plus students participating in GSA had better attendance due to a feeling of belonging and safety at school, as well as a higher grade point average. Additionally, GSA's are particularly important, timely, because today LGBT youth recognize label and come out as LGBT at younger ages than ever before. And the legalization of same-sex marriage is likely to lead to more children with same-sex parents, further amplifying the need to teach students about diversity and prepare them to live in more of a pluralistic society. Lastly, acknowledging that West Milford Township is in the state of New Jersey, which, as of January first, 2019, introduced an LGBTQ history requirement as a supplement of chapter thirty-five of Title eighteen A of the New Jersey statutes. It would be quite unfortunate to eliminate the GSA as a space of learning when most New Jersey schools, West Milford included, have not adequately added instruction on the political, economic, and social contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender people to the curriculum. I hope those of you that sit on the Board of Education can put your personal bias aside and make the decision that is right for the students, district, and West Milford community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pelar. I saw this hand first. This one, and then one more. Okay, so as of right now, this will be our last speaker.
Wait a minute. Hi, my name is Emily Torres. I live at fourteen forty-nine Union Valley Road. I'm a two thousand nine graduate of West Milford High School and one of the first members of the GSA. I can tell you, this is my first time in a school board meeting. This is the first time I've actively participated in anything involved in the West Milford school system, by choice. I learned late in life that I am a member of the LGBTQ community, and that space was the only safe space that I had. You cannot propagandize my existence. If you don't know Matthew Shepard's name, consider yourself lucky, because I grew up with that name in my heart. A safe space for children, your children, teenagers, whether they are straight, whether they are gay, at the end of the day, keeps them out of the morgue. There are a lot of deaths in my graduating class that have nothing to do with gender identity, and everything to do with a lack of safe spaces present in this town for our youth, especially our marginalized youth. And there's more behind me. There are more children who are currently, I know of at least one, who is struggling with this process, this journey of self-identification, who no longer rides the bus because their school community will not do anything about the things that they are facing. There are safe spaces that exist for them now, and here we are getting ready to take that away from them. I can't fathom, if an offender had been in charge of the chess club for a short period of time, we wouldn't be standing here talking about punishing those kids for the offense of an adult and for the failure of their community. Thank you.
Excuse me, wait one second. Can you tell me your name again?
Emily Torres.
Emily, thank you. If that student is a West Milford community student in our schools, I do not want you to answer and do not tell any names, but please call the board office and speak with one of the two people to my left. Please, and thank you.
Thank you.
Post this public. That's the second half hour of public comment. Mr. Garino.
So I would like to extend that for at least another half hour.
All in favor? Yeah.
Would it be fair to have a show of hands of how many speakers would like to speak?
That would be fair, yes. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak.
Hopefully all of you.
I see four, so we can do one more half hour, and then, and then we will move. So, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I am not opposing. I, I, I need to go to the ladies' room, so I am really, I am so sorry. I, okay, thank you. Okay, so I am guilty of mass consumptions of...
All right, hurry up. Do we do a five-minute break? I have to wait for her. Actually, I'm not going to wait for her, but go ahead and, um... Deb, Debbie.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going, Mom, I'm going.
She's not listening. No, I, I understand why she said that, because she doesn't want you to think that she's being rude. She can get in that bathroom, I already went there. Hello, sir. I'm sorry, you know what? I should have started this meeting with sharing my pronouns. Kate Romeo, she and her, and I'm struggling up here saying hello to everyone not knowing your pronouns, so I really struggle with that, so I'm sorry. Hello, and thank you for being here. Please share your name and address.
I am Denny Gravel. I live at three Saraback Road, and I am currently a student at West Milford High School. I would like to start by thanking you all for your time. I stand before you today, West Milford Township Board of Education, to discuss a recent claim made about the high school's GSA, one stating that it is inappropriate. As a member of two years, I can speak from experience to say that it is anything but. The GSA offers a safe space to students who are need and want. When the world throws everything from bullies to traumatic and unwelcome environments, the GSA offers a sense of normalcy. Even though I do not stray from such an arduous environment, the GSA helps me in ways I never expected. Being a part of a community of people who face similar challenges as I have, has helped me become a stronger individual, helping me for when those challenges present themselves again. If the GSA has helped me in that way, to that extent, imagine how much it means to the students who unfortunately face harder challenges. The GSA is not just an important club, it's an essential one. Besides offering students a safe space, we discuss current events regarding LGBTQ issues to better our understanding of said issues. We host bake sales and give the profit to charities like the Trevor Project, an organization dedicated to helping LGBTQ youth who are in crisis. The Trevor Project itself estimates that more than 1.8 million LGBTQ youth seriously consider suicide each year in the U.S. Spaces, communities, and spaces, groups, and communities like the GSA are vital to many students' well-being. I simply ask you, the Board of Education, to handle any matter regarding the GSA with the knowledge of its importance to many of the students at West Milford High School. That is all I needed to say. Please consider my and my peers' words in any decision you need to make.
Thank you very much. Can I have the speaker from this side of the room, please? Thank you. Please sign, um... Yeah, I had someone raise their hand from over here, one person.
Hi, my name's Charles DeCesar. I live at three fifteen Moorestown Road. I'm an alumni of West Milford High School, class two thousand eight, and so is my sibling, Malcolm. Sorry if I get a little emotional. I'm gonna keep it short. If it were not for the GSA, my sibling would be dead. There were multiple times in my growing up in this town where I faced toxic masculinity, I faced bigotry, but not nearly as much as my sibling did. And many times I had to stand there and see them suffer. And you can have all the love in the world at home, all the love in your sibling's heart, but they spend hours at school, days, years, and for what, two hours a week? They get some semblance of safety from their own peers that talk down to them, treat them like they're disgusting, or something that shouldn't exist? Shame on anyone that believes the GSA should not exist, for it is vital to the survival of our community, the people, the children, the teenagers. My sibling Malcolm would not be here today if he did not have the support of people who advocate and are allies like myself, and for all the lovely people here who came in support of this club. GSA is necessary, it's vital, it saves lives. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Charlie. Thank you. Please make sure to sign the thing when... Next speaker, in the back. Hi, can you state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Rachel Chandler.
Actually, you don't have to share your address. Go ahead.
Yes. Okay. Sorry, I didn't have anything planned. I left work early. People can get their coffee tomorrow. This is important to me, obviously. I'm speaking as a happily out lesbian, I'm a happily out, non-binary person, and I come from a different sort of perspective, as I was blessed with an amazing, amazing family, and I was never afraid in my home. I didn't have that experience like most GSA members, and I am blessed and lucky for that. However, West Milford High School is not a safe place in those hallways. It's not. As an out-gay individual, you can't walk down those halls holding somebody of the same gender's hand without getting a look on your face, or somebody calling you a name behind your back, or you hear whispers, and those are sometimes the worst, because they could go either way. But I joined GSA my sophomore year, I believe, as I found out from my sister, that it was an awesome club, it was a great community. I'm also speaking to you as a, the co-president of GSA. I graduated in twenty twenty-two. Running the club was a great experience as well, I got to work closely with other students and individuals. However, getting rid of this club is not only, it, it's becoming political, and it shouldn't be. This is not a political matter. This is something that is societal, it doesn't matter about what your opinions are. This is something about love, this is about people, this is about society, these are real teenagers that are trying to find a safe place to discuss these issues. And luckily, I'm not coming from that perspective, I'm very lucky. However, without this kind of safe place in this school, in this community in particular, there are places you could probably find where people are happy, with people walking down the street holding their hands if they're of the same gender, but it's not here, not in West Milford, unfortunately. And if you're not gay, you may not know that clearly. However, getting rid of this club, it's only gonna do harm to these students. This is a Board of Education, it's not a Board of whatever I want to talk about or whatever I think is right. There will be blood on your hands, whether that is mentally or physically, these kids are going to talk badly to themselves, they're going to do things to themselves, and God forbid, one child finds himself in a position where they can't find anybody to talk to and feel so alone that they find the need to take their own life. That blood is on your hands, nobody else. And that goes for those who vote no as well. That's really all I wanted to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last speaker of the night. Actually, I'm sorry, it's not the last speaker of the night, it's the last speaker of this portion of the meeting.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. My name's Raven Romero. I live at three three eight Lake Shore Drive. I am one of the founding members of the GSA, the original GSA, when it was founded in two thousand eight, so I felt like it was really important that I come out here and talk to you guys about this. To say that there's... Is that okay? I'm not loud enough? It's the first time I've ever heard that. Right, right, okay. So, yeah, I wanted to come here and talk to you guys today. I'm gonna keep this really brief, because I know you've already heard from a lot of us, and really, there's nothing that I can say right now that hasn't already been covered. We've gone over statistics, we've gone over pre-pills, personal experiences. I just want to give mine. As a person who graduated, or, you know, a former member of the West Milford High School, as a queer woman, as a biracial woman, as a person who, you know, unfortunately has been affected and had to live and walk through those hallways every day, I think everybody here knows how necessary the GSA is. I think anybody who's ever been to West Milford High School, or any of the other schools in this district, knows how vital this is. At the end of the day, you know, this is suicide prevention. Everybody who's talked here about this today, you know, they've talked about it, I just want to say personally, for me, I would not be here today, alive, to speak on this if it wasn't for the GSA. That was a community that showed me love, that showed me acceptance, it gave me a safe place to be myself. I remember the first day after leaving the GSA, relief. And you know, when you're walking around every day, you're worrying about being who you truly are when you're at that delicate age in high school, to feel a sense of relief, to feel like you've found community, there is nothing like that, honestly. I mean, that is suicide prevention, that is community care. I think all of you guys know that, you know, and I think that's why you've extended the time to make sure that we all get a chance to talk, because you know how vital this is. And just seeing the ripple effect of the GSA throughout our community, you know, some of the people who have talked here tonight have been intrinsic to making sure that I'm safe, that I'm here, that I'm alive today, you know? And if I didn't have that community, and that can be a tough thing in West Milford, especially because, you know, there is a lot of bigotry, you know? Case in point, we're here right now, there's obviously a lot of bigotry, you know? And that's something that, it's hard to divorce the idea of West Milford and bigotry from each other, because for such a long time, we've dealt with this. I mean, since I was grade school age, I've been dealing with this in West Milford High Schools, or West Milford School District, you know? And so for there to be something like this, and you can't tell me, you know, because what, what other community program do we have for queer youth in this community? Can anybody name anything for queer youth in this community? Exactly. You know, this is the one thing that we have. And honestly, you know, at the end of the day, queer people are going to continue making queer spaces, making this community safe. The reason why I've stayed in this town, and I feel so passionately about staying in this town, is because I know I'm not gonna go off somewhere else where they're gonna accept me more, and leave the people behind in this community who are vulnerable people, who need that help and support, who need to see other queer members of their community, you know, not only just surviving, because that's hard enough here, but also thriving, you know? And not only that, this group has taught me how to advocate for myself, not only in the workplace, which is absolutely one hundred percent necessary, you know, not only in my own education going forward after I left West Milford High School, but just in my community at large, you know? If we didn't have these other community members building each other up and creating that safety for each other, I mean, you know, like so many people here have already said, and like I've said myself, I wouldn't be here right now if not for that. So I want you guys to take that into consideration, I'm gonna leave it there. You know, at the end of the day, I think all of you guys know what you need to do here. The person who had said before about blood being on your hands is one hundred percent true, you know? And it does sound like that might be something really dramatic to say, but at the end of the day, you know, I wouldn't be here. You know, I hope that other people will take that into consideration and make sure that we protect the kids who are coming forward.
Thank you, Raven. Being that our last speaker, Raven just asked us if we know of any other support groups for the queer community, and wasn't sure that I was going to share this, but I do know of one, at the Sparta Methodist Church. And they meet the third Wednesday of every month. Their group has grown, I'm not sure what it stands for, but it's, sounds like some of you know about that. But the Sparta United Methodist Church does have meetings for support, and the Highlands Family Success Center would be a place where you could go and ask them to build a West Milford meeting if that was also needed. Thank you, everyone. Motion...
I'd like to make a motion, close public comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, hang on. I have to say it again with your mic on because I cannot hear you.
I would like to make a motion... Oh, of course, my mic doesn't work well. I would like to make a motion to suspend rules so I can address the audience.
Peter, you second. All in favor? So that's... You're in favor. So there's four. Any opposed?
Aye.
Fair post. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Claire, okay. Simple Mac for me. Claire, can you explain you are saying that you are in favor or you are opposed? So it's five in favor and four opposed. Will, you may address the audience.
Thank you. First, to the members to ask for my resignation, I'd like to say that it's not happening only because I'm here because nobody else in the township of 10,000 homes ran for this position. Secondly, you guys did win over my heart. And I just, before I address that, I want to address a couple of things. A lot of things are brought to the table by email and discussed with trustees, and all it comes with is venom. Bigoted, homophobic, on and on and on. Do you know who I am? Do you know what I do? Do you know my family? Do you know my friends? The answer for most of you is no. And the people that do know me probably have disagreements about budgets in this room. But when it comes to what was said about the GSA in June, that wasn't a hateful statement. Thank you.
That wasn't a hateful statement. It's just a better microphone. That was having a background in scouting that had abuses happen. That was a background that saw barriers to abuse happen. Now, this is not at all a slight on any advisor in particular. And I got the time to think about that. I got the time to think about that. Yeah, this isn't tennis. This isn't golf. This isn't football. But we could think back, and we know that abuses did happen in those areas. Absolutely. I know they happened. We all know that they happened. And I further thought about it, that things happened in this school, and it wasn't the children's fault. It was an adult's fault. And as a board, there were gaps that were breached, and we never addressed them. Fair enough. Going to all the statements that were made... You know, I'm just going to keep going. With all the statements that were made, there is a place that you need to feel connected with others for support, for help. And with that in mind, I will vote yes. And I will also...
Apologize.
Yeah.
The apology. I'm not going to apologize for what I thought because I just explained it to you. But I do want you to have yours.
That's enough. You cannot have a conversation from the audience to the board member. It is not time for a public comment. And even during a public comment, you are only to speak to me. Thank you.
I just need another minute of time.
Well, you have... Yeah, you have enough. Go ahead. Thank you.
I am sorry that it seemed like I wanted something taken away, and it was misconstrued. On my thinking, and it takes people to speak to you to open your mind to something different, which is what happened tonight. I was never a student that had struggles like that. I was never a student that felt that alone and that scared. I was never in that position. And you see, the people that walked out were willing to listen to me on this final note. Does that tell you something about their character? Well, it should because I wanted to listen to you, and I would hope that anybody would just listen to me. I will vote yes on this. I will support it. First, it was brought up that this is a part of Supreme Court... Supreme Court precedent that any club shouldn't be banned. I understand that. I do. And I do want your rights protected, and I do want you to feel safe. So I don't feel like I need to apologize for anything because I was looking out for the best interest of students. But I didn't know the impact that something like this would have. And I do remember names like Matthew Shepard. And I never forget those. I have family members that are gay. I was a minister at a gay wedding. I was the minister. Like...
Good job.
Still privileged. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Um, thank you. All right, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, we're at... We have the two hand carries.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Lockwood, Education.
I make a motion to approve the agenda items one through 10 and hand carry number one, agenda items 11 through 14 under Education.
Any questions or comments? Linda and then Terri.
I would like to table number four until after executive session.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, and Terri and then Marissa.
On number three, can you explain what that is? I don't recall. I might have missed something. Zern, Educational Services?
So Zern is the digital companion to the new math curriculum that we just adopted. So in our process over the year, we adopted the Eureka squared math. This is the digital component that supports that program.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask to table number two just so I could get more information. I read the summary.
Do I have a second?
From the committee.
Second.
I just wanted to look.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's what Mrs. Stevenson is discussing also. Any opposed? Okay, so we're tabling two and four. Any other questions or comments?
For the both until after executive?
Until after executive session, yes. It can be. It's a contract. He doesn't know what it is.
I didn't turn your mic on. You don't like it on.
Hey, this mic doesn't work. Turn down a couple of mics.
Mr. Greeno, I don't know where your question is, so I can't tell you that it's supposed to be in executive session. We have two choices. You can either ask it now, and we can tell you that it's in an executive... You'll have the same conversation outside.
Okay. We'll do that.
It's already approved to be discussed after and voted on after executive session. Can you discuss it? If that, then you guys can have a private talk. Can you pass that to Tara, please? No, that's okay. Okay, any other questions or comments under Education? Roll call, please. Mrs. Lockwood.
Yes.
Mr. Greeno.
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano.
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer.
No on number one, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
No on number one, yes on everything.
Mr. Lippi.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo. Yes. At this time, I would like to welcome and ask Dr. Fenari if she would like to take the microphone and save you.
We didn't honor it.
Oh, sorry. That's next one. Personnel. I threw it on my agenda in the wrong place. I am sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Slow down.
Stay seated.
Okay. Operations of sadness, Mr. Greeno.
It's Personnel and Student Affairs.
Where? Okay. I apologize. I totally jumped ahead. Okay. Oh, my goodness. Personnel and Student Affairs. Mrs. Van Dyke. Thank you for your forgiveness.
Thank you. I'd like to move item number one through 11 on the agenda and the hand carry number... A motion from 30, one through 30, and the hand carry of 32 through 37.
There's 31.
No, 31.
There's 31 on page 13.
Oh, I didn't see 30. I apologize. I missed it. 31, awesome.
So I saw on the hand carry today that there's a resignation from Tracy Lombardi. I know that the folks at Paradise Knoll are really going to miss Tracy being there. So whatever you're doing next, Tracy, we applaud you and we're very sad that you're leaving us.
Good luck.
Any other? Go ahead.
I would like to thank Henry Cox for his years of service. He was a custodian in my section of the building when I taught at the high school. And can I just give this one? Yes. Can I just give this one anecdote? I was doing the HSPT at the time, and the blower in my classroom was always noisy. And that day, it blew. And water started coming out. And I called Henry. He helped me get the kids out of the classroom. We had to contact the state because there was an irregularity in this, in testing. But he's wonderful, and he's going to be sorely missed. The kids loved him. The faculty... I mean, I loved him. I'm sure the faculty loved him. And I just want to thank Henry for all his service and all his help with that classroom disaster. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Is anyone else? There's also, we have a media specialist leaving, Cindy Vannery. And again, it's a tough year with the media specialists. And seeing Cindy leave and going to another district, I think, is tough on us all. And we wish you well wherever it is, whichever district you are going to, Cindy.
Go ahead.
I want to grab onto a hot topic tonight real quick. Item number 24 is in number 27. I want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking their mind, sharing their thoughts as a graduate of West Milford High School way back in 1986, and having friends who were in the, was then just known as the gay community. I understand a lot of what went on for those people, and I do see and do remember what was, what some of you mentioned in the hallways and things like that. What I'd like to do is ask the board that with some of the words that were used tonight, things like suicide, depression, anxiety, feeling vulnerable and things like that, I do not know either one of the advisors. I'll put that out there right now. I do not know what their qualifications are. What I'd like to know is that in the future, we can revisit in order to perhaps bring in people who are trained to deal with ideas of anxiety, depression, and the likes, just to make sure that... And again, I don't know... I don't know if you have those qualifications or not. If you do, fantastic. But I would just like to make sure that we support these children.
Can you... Are you requesting that the board get... That our staff be trained on anxiety and depression?
That we look deeper into making sure that they have the tools in their toolkit to help these children, having dealt with some other kids who are, who are not necessarily... They were not in the LGBTQ plus community. I apologize if I forget a letter here. But they also dealt with depression, and without having the proper people, bad things happen. We know that. So I just want to make sure that as a board, we put that on record.
Well, it looks... Yeah, I am... Thank you. That was... That's a good request. And from my opinion, it looks like they have the proper person running GSA, but he still has support. And I know after working in West Milford and myself, that that individual and any other individuals are trained to know who to bring students to that are in need. And then it's our counseling staff and our CST case managers. And, you know, we've had a lot of success, I believe, in West Milford in supporting because they have, from where I sit now and from when I did work there, all of my experience, it's the proper people, you know?
There can be my own experiences, can be short-term success and long-term success. And these are sometimes completely different patterns.
Yeah, yeah. And that's good to discuss, and we should be discussing it, and all schools should be discussing it, right? And suicide prevention programs and all of those things. So yes, that is something that we can...
Romeo, can I say? Go ahead. To my knowledge, and Mr. Novak, correct me if I'm wrong, we have had professional development in mental illness and dealing with su... I mean, I remember sitting in professional development for suicide. And so I really believe our advisors are trained and are compassionate. And am I wrong that we...
Our staff completes a annual suicide prevention training.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Thank you.
Sometimes it needs to be deeper. If I could make one more statement?
Yes.
Okay, items... All right. Item number 29 and 30. I'd like to table until speaking about it in executive session. Go from there.
There are seconds. So all in favor? Um, it didn't pass.
So I don't want to sound redundant, but I believe... All right, let me go in this direction. Education doesn't work in a vacuum, and working with our educational community doesn't work in a vacuum. And working... And the community does not... Working with students isn't just a one-to-one thing. And I believe, and I know this indirectly, and I'll leave it as that, when my children were in school, that when they had issues of their adolescence, that it was not one teacher and it wasn't just one instance where it was... When there was a problem, it was a team effort. I believe, and from what I can see today, it's validated, okay? Inside the educational walls, outside the educational walls, that we're all here for this, for each other, whether we're part of the LGBTQ community or not. And what I do for a living, and I'm not going to go into that, I work with families dealing with homelessness, domestic violence, and that kind of stuff. It's never just one thing. Being, by saying that, I truly believe that as the group is important, their support with people, the educational community for that group, for those students, and for hopefully all students. And as long as we work together as a team to the best of our ability, I... It's a win-win for our kids. And it's always got to be kids first, always. Bye, Linda.
I think I'm just going to piggyback on what you just said.
Oh, why?
Because... Oh, when I look out at this audience, I'm seeing many staff members who are here in support of Mrs. Sigourney. And I think that that's a good thing because it shows that the work that you're doing with GSA and in the school itself has...
has your, these are the fruits of your labor right here. So what I say to you is thank you. For hearing about our kids.
Any other comments? So, um, my comments are that this is better than a good movie. I, um, got some tears in and I feel the love. And I do want to address Mr. Sidewitz and just say, um, you're a good team player. And even when you make comments that upset the community, they're still, you're still willing to learn and listen. And I respect that from you. Um, and the fact that you shared with everyone that they've changed your mind, um, carries a lot of weight and respect from Kate Romeo, whether that means something to you or not. But, um, I truly, um, respect that. And, um, yeah, so thanks for the good movie. Not that it is a movie, but you know, those are the things I look for in a good movie. Um, so with no other comments, let's please go to real call. Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain on number nine and yes on the rest.
Mr. Sidewitz? Mr. Lippi?
No on twenty-nine, thirty. Yes on everything else.
Mrs. Ricano? Mrs. Lockwood? Mr. Greeno?
Abstain on, uh, number nine and twenty-three. Yes on the rest.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Abstain on number twenty-eight and yes on the rest.
Miss O'Brien?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain on number nine and yes on everything else.
Now, I would like to wait up our new superintendent, Dr. Fanari.
I may even have to, and I'm the short one in the crowd. Thank you so much to the trustees for not only sticking through a long process with me. I really appreciate the deliberation and the conversation that we had and the subsequent conversations I've had. Thank you to Ms. Francisco for supporting me throughout, you know, the whole process and just being so helpful. This is my thirty-ninth year in education. And I have been in large districts, in very, very small districts. Everyone right now is struggling with so many important topics. And, and, um, so much of it involves how we take care of our students. I applaud you for this evening's discussion. I applaud you for sticking with it because this is not easy work. And you are all volunteers. And to you and to the staff members and the parents and the community members who are here this evening, I really look forward to getting to know all of you. So thank you so much. And, um, hopefully August first will be here soon.
August first, you'll be here before you know it. Thank you. Mr. Carrino, Operations and Finance.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve numbers one through nine.
Second.
Under Operations and Finance.
Questions and comments?
I don't know if this is for here. Just one question on number nine. We're looking at the three buses for a five-year term. Is that, is the five-year term, as I'm not in the Finance Committee, is that what the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey has? Do we have other ways to get a six-year term? We're just looking at a cash savings during, during this.
Yeah, um, we work with municipal capital, which is where we lease purchase our buses through them. We find that, um, with the number of miles that our buses travel, we usually, um, turn them around. Some of them last a lot longer than the, the five years. But we usually find five years is a good turnover for our buses. So that's why we finance them for five years. And then the ones that are ten years old, then we can start. It, there's a flow. There's a flow. So the five-year lease gives us a reasonable purchase, um, annual purchase cost. And, um, you know, we, we keep our inventory healthy. You know, just like anything else, when you, no, no, we usually keep them. But it depends, you know, we get lemons just like everybody else gets lemons. And when we find that our maintenance costs are, are increasing because they're burning too much oil or we can't fix them or something keeps happening, then we know that we can sell them. We, we go to auction for, for them. And then we can replace them with other things. So we keep a healthy inventory so that some of our buses, if they go on field trips, we use a newer bus because it's gonna be further away from the district. So there is, there is actually a type of science that our mechanics use when it comes to, uh, requesting equipment. And fortunately, they know what they're doing when it comes to maintaining it.
I just want to say something about that. Years ago, we used to have to buy like twenty buses at a time. And this is the best, I mean, it used to hit us so hard in certain cycles of the year, and you weren't able to do what we're doing now. And I think that it definitely helps us as a.
We're, we're experiencing a lot of problems though because the inventory is not there. You know, we're just getting buses in that we ordered a year ago. So it, it's really problematic. The supply chain has really affected us. And so has the financing cost because just like everyone else is dealing with increased financing costs, so are we. And, uh, we're dealing with pretty large numbers. So it, it, we're, we're trying to be as cost-conscious as we possibly can, but we also need to keep our students, um, safe. So we're doing the best we can.
Any other questions or comments? Um, roll call, please. Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricano? Mrs. Lockwood? Mrs. Dwyer? Mr. Sidewitz? Miss O'Brien? Mr. Lippi? Mrs. Van Dyke? Mrs. Romeo?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number ten under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Mr. Greeno?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ricano? Mrs. Lockwood? Mrs. Dwyer? Mr. Sidewitz? Miss O'Brien? Mr. Lippi? Mrs. Van Dyke? Mrs. Romeo?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items eleven and twelve under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. Ricano? Mrs. Lockwood? Mrs. Dwyer? Mr. Sidewitz? Miss O'Brien? Mr. Lippi? Mrs. Van Dyke? Mrs. Romeo? Abstain.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number thirteen under Operations and Finance.
Second.
My, my agenda is messed up. I'm sorry. I am a yes on the former one, and I need to abstain on thirteen when I get there. I'm sorry about that. Any questions or comments on thirteen? Roll call. Mr. Greeno?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ricano? Mrs. Lockwood? Mrs. Dwyer? Mr. Sidewitz? Miss O'Brien? Mr. Lippi? Mrs. Van Dyke? Mrs. Romeo? Abstain.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items fourteen through sixteen under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing as non-roll call. Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mr. Sidewitz? Mr. Lippi? Miss O'Brien? Mrs. Lockwood? Mrs. Dwyer? Mrs. Van Dyke? Mrs. Ricano? Mrs. Romeo? Committee reports. There was no parks and rec meetings. Okay, great. Terry and Debbie Stacey? Superintendent's roundtable?
Uh, no superintendent's roundtable until the news.
State county school boards? New Jersey school boards? Legislative?
Yeah, I got a report. Hi, sir.
All right, kids.
All right, so the Fiscal Year 2024 Appropriations Act was approved by the Assembly and Senate Budget Committees on June twenty-eighth. Oh. And then by the False Legislator and the Governor on June thirtieth. Limited exceptions, the signed budget includes nearly all the education programs the Governor included in his proposed budget funded at the same time. Um, I'm gonna bring a couple of points to our, uh, our already, our audience and our Board of Ed. Speaking about buses, uh, they want to, there's a bill called the Extend Service Life of School Buses. They want to extend the useful service life of certain school buses to twenty years, providing a temporary one-year extension of service life to Type S school buses. The bill would extend the service life to most school buses from fifteen years to twenty years while specifying that it does not allow the use of any school buses for pupil transportation if that school bus is determined to be unsafe or unfit. Um, the Senate passed a few, uh, bills. The Teacher Loan Redemption aims at addressing the school teacher shortage and would expand the New Jersey Class Teacher Loan Redemption Program to include teachers from all subject areas with any kind of student loans. Emergency Teacher Certification establishes emergency teacher endorsements in certain circumstances. The bill would establish an emergency instructional certi, certificate for teachers and teachers, can, teacher candidates in high-needs fields. A certificate would allow eligible certified teachers pursuing endorsement in high-needed areas to fill positions in areas while they are in process of getting the endorsement. And the other thing I'd like to mention, and this is under the General Assembly and was passed, is boosting reading levels. It directs the Commissioner of Education to establish a three-year pilot program to increase reading levels of certain students and appropriates one million dollars. The bill would direct the Commissioner of Education to establish the pilot program that will provide general education students who are not reading at grade level by the end of second grade in selected school districts with summer school instruction. There's a lot more, but it's a long night.
Thank you. Technology oversight?
No report.
Township Board of Education?
Uh, we're just awaiting for the feasibility study to be finished. So nothing new to report.
Thank you. West Milford Municipal Alliance?
Uh, the alliance met on Monday, July tenth. There were, there were discussions, uh, on the agenda for the money West Milford received from the opioid settlement and process of serving, uh, part of that is that the survey, they want the community surveyed on the best use of this. The alliance has reached out to the Township Administration and Town Council regarding this. Updating information under our section of the Township website. The alliance is gonna be putting some more information on that.
Correct.
Uh, upcoming events for the municipal alliance will be the National Night Out on Tuesday, August first, which will take place at our high school parking lot this year. The Wellness Family, uh, Wellness Family Festival has joined forces with Chuck Emmering Health Fair for our yearly community event on Saturday, September twenty-third at our Macapin School. There will be plenty of activities, information, and services for all of our community members. The event is free. There may be a small fee for certain tests being offered. The municipal alliance will be at our annual out festival. Our next meeting will be a hybrid meeting on Monday, August fourteenth at seven P M. So you can either attend at the library or on Zoom. And if you're interested in becoming a member of the alliance, please contact the Township.
Thank you. CPAC?
CPAC just asked me to say that they're putting a date on the calendar for August, a tentative date for August ninth of virtual meeting for the parents and caregivers.
Thank you. Uh, any old business? Terry has one. Go ahead, Terry.
I, I don't know if this is old business or new business, but I have to say that, um, Dan Kojacki, I think is his name, thanked the board profusely for the use of the grounds for the fireworks for this year. And the fireworks were spectacular. And I have to say that everybody that was there left that field immaculate. And, um, it was a good night. And I thanked Dan and the rec for letting us give that, that opportunity to have those fireworks.
Great. Any other old business?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are at the secondary public comment portion. This is where you can talk about non-agenda items also. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of thirty minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who've requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Um, I believe we have one person signed up, Dr. Goff.
Is it already on? Okay. Okay, so before I give an update regarding the Funding Committee, first of all, Dr. Marissa Goff, resident thirty-four, Center Street. Um, I did just want to ask a question regarding the Director of Education's report. I didn't want to take away from the GSA community, so I wanted to ask it now. Um, I commend the Macapin Girl Scouts for coming up and speaking. That is a very sensitive topic, especially at that age. But, um, if there's any way that you can ask the group of girls to maybe introduce this at a younger age, from personal experience, I was ten years old when I had my first period. So having that available at the elementary school level, maybe having a period kit in the bathrooms would be super helpful. Not having it at the nurse's station unless they have a sweatshirt handy that they can wrap around their waist, as I know most of you know that from experience. So with that said, now I'll get into an update regarding the Funding Committee. So let me take a minute, however, to reiterate how I got to this point. Many of you have reached out to me and provided me with your knowledge and your guidance. Although I am not an educator, I am more aware of how all of this works. I understand what is involved with title funding now, funding programs, special services, and the financial disparities that our unique town faces. For those that I may have offended in the past, please accept my apologies as I was speaking purely from my frustrations at that time. Like many others, I want to be a part of the change. I want to help you make the difference. It was brought to my attention a few board members back, a few board meetings back, how there are a million dollars in grant money to be had. With the help of my dear friend and colleague, Courtney Stevenson, our idea has now become a collaboration. We are extremely grateful for those that have reached out and helped us thus far. Our joint venture is to bring back an education foundation that will help raise money for the schools and touch as many lives as possible. This will require its own board members, trustees, and volunteers. We want everyone to understand that this does not just positively impact families with children in the school system. We aspire to be like nearby foundations such as Ringwood that raised forty-two thousand dollars last year alone, which they put back into their elementary schools. Or like Sparta Education Foundation, who has raised over one million dollars since 2018. We need to boost morale, not just in our schools, but also in our town. We need to have fundraisers that praise our restaurants, our scenery. We need to remind everyone why this town is for them. This could potentially lessen the financial burden and tough decisions that you, as a board, have to make on a daily basis. Grant money from the Ed Foundation can be allocated to STEM, creative programs, clubs, enrichment. enrichment, you name it. This could be a tedious process that would require an application, approval process, and require the Board of Ed to help us distribute those funds, not allocate them. We were really impressed when over 30 people attended our general interest meeting last month at the town library. We have the people, now we need to work out the logistics. I have here with me a handout which breaks down our tentative plan. Our goal is to have different subgroups, or as we say, divide and conquer. There will be a group of board members that approve applications for funding requested by our staff or students. Other members will take care of our fundraising events. Other members will focus on grant requests directly through the state that are available. We invite any who is interested in being a part of our cause to attend our next general interest meeting on Wednesday, August 16th from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the high school cafeteria. I will repeat that. Wednesday, August 16th, 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at the high school cafeteria. There is much to discuss at this meeting and we hope someone from the board will join us. We appreciate your support and more than, and we appreciate your support and are more than willing to meet with you outside of these board meeting walls if you have any questions regarding this foundation. This is a combined effort where we are taking every interest and experience into account.
Thank you. Dr. Goff, can you please add on your handout? Senator Buco, who has been fighting on our behalf of West Milford and understands our needs and is, Senator Anthony Buco is working to get West Milford some funding. So please add him on there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have someone else that would like to speak? Mrs. Stevenson.
Who could this be?
One last question. I'm just curious where we stand with a chemistry teacher come this fall? That is a good. Oh, we did. Fantastic. But I think the real question is, does that mean that labs would be back? And we haven't heard anything about that. So can we add that to the committee meeting agenda for August, please, to discuss chemistry labs? I would like to know if that means that we can have everything back in place and it has not yet been discussed with the board. So thank you for bringing that up.
I think you could, if there are four members, you could create another liaison type group. There used to be a liaison for the Ed Family.
Well, so this is interesting and probably needs to be discussed. So yes, I will appoint a board member for the Ed Foundation. And essentially, I think, but I haven't, I don't know for sure, which is one of the things I wanted to discuss when I go on August 16th, is will the Ed Foundation and then HFC be two different things? And so if they are, I can either appoint two different board members. I know that HFC originally was trying to get anyone and everyone from the community and we discussed that it was an open public meeting and that if five of us showed up, you know, that that was okay, just like when we did with Kathy Helloa, you know, the cool strategic planning, right?
That is accurate, but that was advertised.
Okay, so when is committees in August? What's the date? Is committees before the 16th? So it's the day before, so that will not help me. So I will need to know if you plan on attending on the 16th because if you are, then I will advertise it as a board meeting. I know I'd like to go. I think we should all, as many as can go, should try to see what's happening and so we can discuss this. If you could text me or email me around July 26th, as my car's packed to leave for vacation right after this meeting. No, I'm kidding. So that I'll know if you guys are going or not and then I'll ask the board office to, okay? All right, cool. Do I have any other speakers? Yes, sir. Please.
Hi, Joe Connors, 37 Hyview. Just a point for clarity for those of us trying to follow along sometimes, especially when you're discussing a large number of agenda items like Personnel Finance, which I believe had, I'm not sure if you approved 37 or 39 because there was two on the back page of the hand carry. I'm not sure if those got included. So maybe for the future, before you do the roll call, kind of, just kind of do a clarification like this is for, you know, these items, so everybody is on the same page.
There is no sturdy.
Back of the page.
And we moved.
So it would avoid that problem as well. So I guess that answers my question for whether or not you guys approved 38 and 39 for tonight. I guess the answer to that is no, but please try and in the future, especially when there's corrections to which item numbers you guys are approving.
Thank you. Thank you. So you didn't see 38 and 39?
Those been tabled to, after executive session.
38 and 39 were not tabled until after executive session, but thank you. And.
I'd like to, I'd like to move items 38 and 39 under Personnel and Student Affairs on the agenda.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a.
Thank you, Mr. Connors.
Yeah. Roll call. Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Mr. Sidowitz. Mr. Lippi. Mrs. Ricano. Mrs. Lockwood. Mr. Greenow.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer. Mrs. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Connors. Anyone else that would like to speak for public comment?
Seeing none, like to close public comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mrs. Lockwood.
Okay, so at 9:24 PM, I make a motion to go into executive session for the per. What's the matter? Okay. For the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, current litigation matters and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. The board will be in executive session for approximately 30 minutes and we will be coming back to take action.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Roll call, please. Mrs. Van Dyke. Mr. Sidowitz. Mrs. Ricano. Mrs. Dwyer. Mrs. O'Brien. Mr. Greenow. Mrs. Lockwood. Mr. Lippi. Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood, Education.
I make motion to approve agenda items two and four under Education.
Second.
All. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Sidowitz. Mrs. Dwyer. Mr. Greenow.
I'm staying on number two, yes on.
Mr. Lippi. Mrs. Lockwood. Mrs. O'Brien. Mrs. Ricano. Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
I'd like to make a motion to.
No, no, no. Mrs. Lockwood, Personnel.
I want to make the following motion. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education authorizes the settlement in the matter of HGV, West Milford Township Board of Education at Paul's Dockett as PAS-L-0791-21 and be it further resolved that the board president is authorized to execute the settlement agreement on the board's behalf.
All in favor? And there's a new roll call. It's a roll call, please. Thank you. Sidowitz. Mrs. Dwyer. Mr. Greenow.
Yes.
Mr. Lippi. Mrs. Lockwood. Mrs. O'Brien. Mrs. Ricano. Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke. Right?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor at 9:57? I am off.